America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice.
We have attorneys of Zonis here for Chapter 61 land lots one through three Pleasant Street.
So, this is the last I can use right, this is the last.
Have we heard that before?
Everything. Technically, I'm here on behalf of Chet and Susan Keller because essentially what's going to happen is we're going to do this simultaneously. The lots one through, a huge parcel is going into them and then from that they're transferring lots one through three which should be on the plan, which I believe you have a copy of. If it's tough to read, I brought the larger one with me, but those three lots are immediately going to be transferred to someone else for single-family homes. So, the purchase price is 375 for the three lots and we're asking you to not exercise your right to purchase.
I'd make a motion to do so.
Not exercising.
Not exercising.
Can I ask a question? How many lots are we talking?
Three. The eighty-two acres in the back is remaining. Mr. Keller, I believe, is going to use that in conjunction with the land he has across the street for frontage.
So, there ought to be frontage lots, there's no subdivision involved?
No, it's three, three frontage lots. As to his future plans, I can't speak to that, that's all I know as to this.
Does it take up, do those three lots take up the whole, all of the frontage?
It takes up, if you want to see.
Is there a map in here and here?
No.
Sorry about that.
Maybe four. I have a marker on it, so it's probably easier for you to see, but these are the three lots we're talking about and this is the remaining, so.
Is that 125?
That's enough.
So, that, I don't know what he, I mean, my understanding is he's leaving it in chapter because he wants to use it in conjunction with what he bought across the street that's still in chapter because he does have that, so.
He does.
But that, just by leaving that, I'm, we.
Well, initially, it was going to be four lots and then he decided that to go down to three.
Well, and I can see why he decided to go down to three.
I can't speak to what his future plans are.
I understand.
Technically, I'm only doing the release for him, that was what he asked me to do, so. But I don't, I don't think he's having any plans.
Probably doesn't have any plans, but he's keeping these options open by keeping that piece.
All he needed was fifty feet, but it's not.
Seventy-five, probably because he put the rest of it live.
And the frontage is, the zoning frontage is there at 175?
Uh, there, there's additional on the other side.
Lot on the other side too. So, he can make the U, he can go in.
The remaining land on the other side of parcel one is only sixty-nine point five three, so that's not enough.
That's enough for a road.
Not enough to build a house, but, no, it's enough for a, uh.
Road.
Which is still below the access.
You got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
There are two forms in the signature folder for, ones for Amanda and ones for our copy. They're under the folder called pending minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The size?
Yeah.
Where the two tangiers?
Miss Roy.
Oh, there she is.
Nothing else for you.
Hello, hello.
Where, where are the minutes, Reggie?
Under.
Drop bys?
Yes.
I got drop by. December twelfth.
Okay. The minutes are under, um.
Under.
Pending minute.
Pending minute. Exactly minutes, can I be done, exactly?
Yeah. Unless the reason for the, the exacting session is?
How many minutes we have here? We have a lot of minutes, right?
Let's, well, why don't we push those to the back of the pile? Take care of other business. Um, so, what are you waiting for signatures, right?
In Chapter Two. She's got the other ones here.
All right, so, we're going to come back to the minutes, signatures, we got payroll warrants somewhere.
Do you need a pen?
Payroll warrant, P-13 dash twenty-three for two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand ninety dollars and six cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you voting?
Had trouble loading the file.
Is that what it's saying, error or loading?
Yeah, it's, I think it's too big, but.
That's gotta go that way. Um, we have a bill warrant, W-13 dash twenty-two for four-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars and fifty-three cents.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have PCFs.
And these PCFs, um, Reggie called me about this, I thought we were just going to call the commission. They told me that Adam Kenny, um, is an urgent.
Yeah.
I have no, uh, problem, um, recommending that you sign it based at the approval of the Finance Committee and the policy procedures which are meeting tomorrow night, uh, is in the affirmative.
Conditioned upon that affirmative vote.
Yeah, and what's the position for Health Agent?
Health Agent, that we don't have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Take care. Good night.
Um, she talked to me and I told her to call you just to check up on that.
Yes, she did, she did. The other ones, I, I told her I didn't think we should vote on those. Uh, we're aware of them, uh, most of them are promotions.
So, so Adam Kenny is just going to replace Josh?
Yes.
Yes.
But we're going to sign this conditioned, the thought is we will pass this tonight conditioned that the PQB passes it tomorrow night.
Is there any concern where? Finance Committee passes it the following Tuesday night.
Is there any concern that they would not? Is there any issue?
I, I, that's why I'm recommending you can go forward because I think it's, it's an urgency. I remember talking to Board of Health wanting to get this done. They haven't had any money for a while, a month and a half. And, uh, according to Reggie, they really need to fill this position.
So, we're talking about Adam Kenny, Bill Kleda?
No.
No, just Adam Kenny.
Just Adam Kenny.
But in general, we're going to do.
The rest are going to be on hold until they go through the.
They, they'll, the other, just this one, we're taking out of context.
All right, so I'd make a motion to go ahead and sign the P, uh.
PCF, conditioned on the other board signing their approval.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The, um, the following PCFs for Bill Kleda, Mr. Henning, and myself are, um, they are going to expire on December twenty-ninth. Personnel Board is not meeting again, they're meeting tomorrow, they will not be meeting again until January eighth or January.
So, we'll take these up, you'll take these up tomorrow night?
We're taking these up tomorrow night.
Yeah, so then we could.
Tomorrow, the eighteenth.
Yeah, so then they'll come back to us then. Okay, so that's done. So, to be clear, we passed, conditionally passed Mr. Kenny, the other three are going to be, well, there's, on the agenda, so we're only dealing, three are going to be tabled for now.
The renewals.
Yeah, but Mr. Henning, Bill Kleda, and Ms. Sullivan will be tabled for now.
And also, uh, to solely, uh, Milmore and, uh, Kleda and Stratus, Stratus, the new hirees and the promotions and the.
Are all going to be tabled.
Yeah.
And that's because the, the Board has to meet the PB?
PPP has to go through procedures at that and Finance has to approve as to finance.
Okay, got you.
All right. PRFs, nothing, disability forms, nothing, to, 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 where, oh, okay, the license renewal. Uh, town hall agreements, discharge of, lean, oh, we can't do that, we're going to have a notary.
Could you, um, make it contingent where Ed could sign it and be notarized in front of Eileen when he comes in?
Sure.
I mean, when she comes in tomorrow.
I have no problem with that. What, what is the, uh, is the release of Eileen?
Yes.
Yeah, it's here.
It's a discharge of Eileen.
Oh, is it on the, uh, housing?
Yeah.
Okay. He's done that before.
Ninety-six Gilbert Road, their loan for home repairs has been paid in full, isn't that pleasant? Might have, Michael, which I assume is me, sign the discharge, have it notarized and return to Jim Mason as soon as possible. One works first.
Make a motion to sign.
Uh, well, here's the problem. They've made out the paperwork as the chairman of the Select Board.
But if you, you authorize me to sign as a board's action, it's like your signature.
Yeah.
Make a motion that Mr. Carley sign to you and to sign for the release.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, just out of, uh, so that was the discharge, is that the one for three thousand?
So, these are taxes that he's paid up or?
No, 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 this is a loan for home repair.
A loan for home repair, okay, got you.
There's one over there, okay. Um, an amendment to Southampton's Master Plan of Implementation Service Notice of Proceeding. Is this this crazy?
Yes.
Twenty thousand dollars that we keep going round and round on?
Didn't sign that last?
No, we asked them to come in.
He's going to meet tomorrow night, he's, the master plan, I believe, or Thursday night, excuse me.
Thursday night. Oh, he's supposed to meet with me tomorrow, Thursday night, okay. This is, and I don't understand, no, I thought they wanted twenty thousand dollars and now it's three thousand.
No, that's for FY eleven, the funds that we carry forward from FY eleven to FY twelve.
I still don't understand that.
They're billing us.
All right, so we're not doing anything for that, I told them.
So, they weren't paid, they weren't paid everything but three thousand dollars on our agreement?
I think the total was like fifteen thousand that was left over and they're still billing us from FY eleven.
For what they didn't, eleven, or what they're doing now for eleven, because I'm, I'm confused.
That's why I'm confused, I'm totally confused on this.
They also, they can bill for eleven unless the work was done.
Period. I'm looking at the monthly contribution of activity from PVPC. It's from August first to August thirty-first of two thousand and twelve, um, and that's what they have done, is, uh, two people.
What page you got there, Jay? Our copy.
Twenty-one.
It looks like it's all the bills from this August, it doesn't look like it's before.
Yeah, you're right.
So, I think we can go ahead with that.
We just, this is what's going to authorize me to sign this thirty-one ninety-eighty-three, right?
No, that's the other one.
What's this one?
See, that's where I was getting confused, looking at this.
It's the same number.
It's, the discharge doesn't have a number on it, that's, the thirty-one ninety-nine three should not be, it should be.
Here it is again.
Thirty-four thousand eighty is the discharge.
How much, yeah, so that's, that's, that three thousand dollar number is attached to the wrong item.
Well, it says invoice number twenty-one.
It just happens to be, uh, by eighty-three cents.
Oh.
All right?
Yes.
Yeah, this one's eighty-three cents, the other one's, uh, zero.
I'm not complaining.
That's what I got.
And eighty-three's on the front.
Where's the eighty?
Eighty-three's there. Where are you seeing eighty?
Eighty-three, I mean, when I say eighty-three is, the other one was thirty-one ninety, no sense, this one says thirty-one ninety-eight, or thirty-one ninety with eighty-three cents.
Because I see the same number twice.
Okay, I'm going to go along with you.
Yeah, it's listed twice, but it's the same document.
So, this is the one you just authorized me to?
No, this is the one we authorized you, there's no number on that, that's what I'm saying, this number here is attached to the wrong item.
So, this is the, the development program, but I think this is, yeah, what it is, Mike, you're right, it's, it looks like it was attached to the right thing.
Yeah, it's attached to the lien, but it should be, it should be on this.
Well, how much is, the lien is being paid off.
Right, so it doesn't.
This is the bill here.
For this, right.
Two separate items.
Two separate items, but this number got attached on you.
So, I think this, it gets stuck in the law.
All I did, when I scanned it, I kept all the documents together.
Yeah, there's no problem.
No problem.
Link pages.
You can, you can pay that.
All right, so do we want to take a, I'd take a motion for induced number twenty-one from Pioneer Valley, uh, planning for services rendered to administer the FY ten Southampton Community Development Fund Program for the period of August two thousand and twelve in the amount of three thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-three cents.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Who's this? Contract extension. We have a, from the PVPC, we have a.
Yes.
Request for a contract extension. Uh, I will be requesting a six-month extension to finish up remaining housing rehab projects. As you know, we are still working on a solution for one of our septic projects.
Yeah.
Even if resolved soon, the weather will limit what can be done this winter, all should be accomplished by June, please have Michael sign the attached document and send back. Program extension to increase the period of availability of funds to six-thirty of thirteen. These, this extension will extend the period of performance beyond the end term of the current grant agreement.
This is the CDVG grant?
Yes.
That's for that, um, septic improvement.
There's a number, number five.
Want to make a motion that Michael would sign this?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, that's done. Where are we, what's left?
We did the, uh, annual license renewals.
We didn't have to take a motion.
We do not have to vote on those, those renew automatically according, I was trying to get you the master and all law, but I provided it last year, I did not have it this year.
Well, let's just run, even though we don't have to do it.
Why was?
I got it here. I would run through, we've been, end of year or beginning of year license renewals for all the various, um, different licenses in town, all alcoholic, not to be drunk on premises, we have Tin Can Alley, Buckwheat's.
Buckwheat? Buckwheat's is closed, I don't know, could he pay for it?
He's trying to sell a license with some place with the. I think he has to be open two weeks a year and I, I think he's been doing that.
I was just going to say, there are some minimum requirements to keep your license. Camp John Association, Red Rock Pizza, Southampton Country Club, Westlake Gourmet Chinese, Pisonos, and Southampton Steakhouse, also known as Opa Opa, all alcoholic, not to be drunk on the premises, country liquor stores, Smitty's, and Southampton Beer and Wine. We have no wine and malt to be drunk on premises, wine and malt not to be drunk on the premises, Pure Food, Hampton Ponds Package and Convenience Store, Juke Boxes, we have Tin Can Alley, Buckwheat's, Camp John, they have two, Red Rock Pizza, Pisonos, Coin Operated Pool Tables, we have Tin Can Alley, Buckwheat's two, Camp John two, Pisonos three, video games, we have Canal Bowling Rains three, Buckwheat's six. Wow. Camp John Association three, Red Rock Pizza, Pisonos Restaurant, live entertainment, Buckwheat's, Camp John, Opa Opa, Pisonos, and Harley Davidson, Bowling Alley, Canal Bowling Alley's, Billiard Room, Canal Bowling Rains, Commin' Vicular, Southampton Country Club, Sheldon's, Dianthus, Garden, Bed and Breakfast.
Oh, that, yeah, that's no longer.
That's not there?
Yeah.
So, that's not getting that.
Turn it down.
Stop and Save, Extra Mark, Subway, Big Y Foods, Cumberland Farms, Rite Aid, Fashistas, Class One, I would assume these are automotive licenses, Harley Davidson, Class Two, Dave's Auto Sales, Joyrides, LFC, FKA, Tarkas, King O Farms, Midtown Motors, Class Three License, what's that, Class Three?
Junkyard.
Midtown Motors. Those are all the licenses that we've been asked to sign.
Is that Country, uh, Southampton Country Club?
Yeah, yeah, for.
Or was it?
Commin' Vicular.
No alcohol?
No.
Yes.
Oh, there's an alcohol, did I miss it?
Should be.
Do they have one?
I didn't hear it.
Now, there, I did, I did.
Um, did the, we usually ask the chief find any of these, uh, licenses, don't we? Is that just a one, two o'clock?
Two o'clock closings, we've done that in the past.
Some issues this year, uh, some of these establishments.
There's been requests there for late closing.
There are two requests, one is from Opa Opa and one is from, um, Camp John.
Um, so, we, why don't we just put this to an official vote, does anybody want to move that we sign all those licenses?
I just have one, one question.
Yeah.
We, we already have three all liquor, not to be drunk on premises.
Yeah, free liquors, package stores.
I know that there is a, a business group in town looking to open a package store. Do we want to pursue that to?
We have to, probably have to wait until they come in, you're limited in your number of licenses by your number of population.
And then you can petition.
And then you can ask for more.
Okay.
Um, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to sign the licenses renewal.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, the two o'clock licenses are there?
Yeah, there's, it should.
I'd like to send those to the police chief for recommendation.
I, I already did, um, the police chief has no problem with Opa Opa, however, he is opposed to Camp John due to problems with drunken patrons and, um.
Didn't have a brawl down there about three months ago?
Which one was that?
Yeah, this.
It wasn't the motorcycles.
No, it wasn't the motorcycles.
Camp John.
It was you.
It was not the motorcycles.
It wasn't, no, the motorcycles didn't get in the wrong.
Had nothing to do with motorcycles.
Oh, really?
How about motorcycle drivers?
Oh, really?
Had to do with alcohol.
A bad ice cube.
I guess you were one of the.
Guns don't kill.
Based on what she just said about the chief, I'm in agreement with that. I don't know if we want to have any further discussion?
Did we get a, a request from?
Yeah, yeah, we have two requests, we have a request signed by, I can't never say the Rizzo's, and then Crassell, the treasurer, Camp John Association. We would like permission to remain open 2:00 AM on New Year's Eve again this year.
Well, if there's, I mean, I, I read about the, I never wanted to talk to the chief about the brawl, but I, I had heard that it was sixty people or it was pretty large.
Well, I'll let him, I don't, I don't, you know, we can, I don't know exactly how bad it was, but I know it was an issue.
Why don't we treat these as two different requests? Do opas opas, send Mr. Crassell a license that, uh, send Mr., a letter ASAP that we are declining his request for a 2:00 AM license, if he'd like to come to us with some.
Come on the twelfth.
Huh?
Come on the eighteenth.
Get on, get on the agenda if he wants to talk to us about it.
Sound like a plan?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, to be clear, we're approving the 2:00 AM license for opas opas, uh, declining the request by Camp John, but sending them a letter and telling them that they wish to plead their case, to come in on the eighteenth.
You want to vote?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, I forgot. Um, you want to deal with number three?
That's number three.
Hours for Town Hall on December twenty-fourth and December thirty-first.
Twenty-fourth's what, Monday?
They're both Tuesday holidays.
Right.
A lot of private establishments, some I'm familiar with are not opening on that Monday, either before Christmas or before New Years.
Oh, okay.
Wrong profession.
So, the question is what?
My own suggestion, my own.
Well, there is no request right now, I think the, the issue is before it becomes a.
I just want to clarify.
Clarify before, I don't, I didn't mean to say there was a request, I just want to say that they're looking for clarification.
Since you can't address all the employees, my suggestion is, if they want to take the day off as vacation, it's fine, because you cannot address the police, you can't address people that have commitments and, um, it's not fair, but if they want to take it off and their bosses are in agreement with it, uh, I would say they take vacation if they want to take it.
Really, the highway, the police, we can't, the highway can't stop.
Police can't, neither can.
Um, I don't know.
I agree, we, I mean, it's a day before Christmas, it's Christmas Eve, you should have it off if they want it off.
But, but you're not granting them a day off, we're not closing.
Right, it's up to, I guess, each individual.
If they take a vaca, if they want to take a vacation day, they're free to, so the, the pronouncement would be, the official policy is we are open on Monday before Christmas and Monday before New Years.
All day.
All day. And any employee wishes to absent themselves will have to use a vacation day, right? Is that everybody's understanding?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So, do we have a motion and a second?
Well, I want to make it.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have a meeting on December eighteenth and member, meeting on January?
That's a Wednesday, January second.
Right, it should be eighth.
January eighth, yeah.
January second.
Wait a minute. December eighth and January second?
No, January second.
December eighteen and January eighth is what it should be.
All right.
Well, January second's not.
Right.
So, strike January second.
It was a Wednesday, right?
Right.
So, strike January second.
Yeah.
So, meetings, so I'm clear, December eighth, January eighth, no, December eighteenth, January eighth, January twenty-second.
Mm-hmm.
All right, everybody?
Yes.
Anybody have any problems with those?
Nope.
That's the December twelfth Historical Commission.
What is that about?
The town had received a letter, um, I think Mr. Closeup's here to.
Um, the Historical Commission had nominated the Center Cemetery for National Recordition about a year and a half ago, and that review is coming up on December twelfth. Um, the state board that's going to review it has suggested that, um, perhaps the Select Board and the Planning Board, uh, might write a letter.
Oh.
Supporting that nomination, which would help towards, uh, I don't know, have they received copies of the?
Yes.
Of what the nomination is?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, I, I intend to go to that hearing, we have a consultant that will go to make the presentation, but if you could, uh, recognize the fact that it is important to the town, that would be, it would be helpful in getting, getting approval.
Do we, do we know how many historical, or, do we know how many graves are in Center Cemetery?
How many graves?
Yeah, do we have any idea?
Total? I can't tell you, yes, we do, we, we do know, it's part of the presentation, but more important than the number of graves are the, um, historical nature of some of the graves.
Right.
Red ward and also the, uh, gravestones, uh, being carved by significant gravestone carvers, uh, but I can't tell you.
That's the December 12th Historical Commission.
What is that about?
The town had received a letter, I think Mr. Kozup's here too.
Yes. The Historical Commission had nominated the Center Cemetery for National Recordition about a year and a half ago. And that review is coming up on December 12th. The state board that's going to review it has suggested that perhaps the select board and the planning board might write a letter.
Oh.
Supporting that nomination, which would help towards, I don't know, have they received copies of the?
Yes.
Of what the nomination reason?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, I intend to go to that hearing. We have a consultant that will go to make the presentation, but if you could recognize the fact that it is important to the town, that would be, it would be helpful in getting, getting approval.
Do we, do we know how many historical, do we know how many graves are in Center Cemetery?
How many graves?
Yeah, do we have any idea?
Total? I can't tell you. Yes, we do. We do know as part of the presentation, but more important than the number of graves are the historical nature of some of the graves.
Right.
Red ward and also the gravestones being carved by significant gravestone carers. But I can't tell you.
I was just curious in the proportion between there and the west part, how many?
Oh.
You know, the difference between.
Oh, maybe about, there's only about 10% if anything after west part and this is probably 90%, not even that, yeah.
Okay.
But I don't think anybody's been buried up there and they've been removed in the last fifteen, twenty years, yeah, but I don't think there's been anybody.
Is that the one up on, way up on former road?
Who's been removed?
Somebody was removed years ago, I forget.
I don't think there are any more than 20 graves.
Oh, there's more than that.
Are there more?
Yeah, you might have thirty, forty stones, but each stone might have twelve, fifteen lots.
Anyway, the purpose of the letter is that the select board and perhaps planning board might support that nomination.
Certainly is historically significant.
Well, and also it opens up for future grants. I mean, there are several of the old gravestones that are, and that's not cheap if it's done the right way. So it opens up possibilities for grants. But it does not restrict anything. Basically, if you read the letter, it doesn't restrict anything.
So I'll have to move that sign again?
Sure.
The historical sign, I'll be moved again?
No, you're not.
Okay, just checking.
Should we, should we have a motion on that?
I would say that would be appropriate that the select board, a motion that the select board send a letter of support for the.
Center Cemetery.
Center Cemetery to the Mass Historical Commission.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that has to be there obviously before.
Before the 12th.
Before the 12th.
Okay.
Do you mind if I, I'll just do from the select board, name your names and then just scan and send it to Mr. Kozup so that he may have it in time?
Yeah, yeah. But we'll have to compose something.
Yeah, I will.
I, I.
I'm going to draft up a letter. I'll sign, have all the select board's names and I'll scan it to you so that you may have it in time to attend the meeting. Or would you want me to give you a call when it's ready?
I would, I would send it to him.
Oh, okay, okay.
Either email or, or send it by mail. I don't, I may not have the opportunity to present it. It's like a lot of fifteen minute presentation.
Gotcha.
And then they decide, so, yeah, I would, I would send it.
Okay.
It'd probably be better to send it by mail rather than email. It's more formal.
Thank you.
I recommend that we send it by mail and then give him a hard copy so he can have it.
Okay, we have no time.
Reggie, I need to back up for a second because there's, I just found a piece of thing, renewal certificate for 2013.
That item needs to be signed as well.
For what?
Stating that you've signed the licenses. And did any, did we not approve anybody? Did we?
No, there's none, there's only.
For violations. Were there anybody with violations? No, there wasn't.
So that's, all right, we'll talk about that after. Select Board, updates and liaisons? Anybody?
I can't give you any updates on union because it's an executive session.
Public Safety Complex Committee vacancies. How many vacancies do we have? The whole board, don't we?
Four.
Oh, that's right, too, because they finished their job.
Well, then Charlie and.
And.
George.
Yep, they submitted their, oh, not George. Charlie and Mr. Barkum submitted their letters of interest.
That's all?
Well, I'd be glad to be on it as well. I was on it before and you select one on it.
Well.
Do you need a line?
No, why don't we just, someone nominate you now.
I nominate Dave McDougall for the Public Safety Complex.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody in our audience like to be on?
Is John Furman interested?
No, he was, he did a lot of cheer at work. I mean, it's amazing.
It is a shame because he's, he's welcome knowledge right now with that.
All right, Housing Authority vacancy. Well, wait a minute, come back to the, how many people do we want on there?
Well, we're on TV time. Why don't you give an announcement regarding Michael?
Well, we have, as I'm saying, how many people do we want on there?
I think you went through this before.
We have another.
You talked about police representative, fire department representative and.
Select board representative.
And what, planning board?
Select board.
Select board representative.
And you left four vacancies open.
Left four vacancies?
So you only have two.
We have, okay, so to the public out there, we have two vacancies on a Public Safety Complex Committee. This would be the committee that's going to be charged with developing a plan for a new police and fire station to replace our unfortunately very dilapidated ones. The committee before you has gone forward and developed a strategy for implementation of a new construction, but we now need people to come on board and work towards the completion of that project. We need at least two more members of the public to be representatives on that, and you will be assisted by people who have experience with these kinds of matters, including representative from the select board, representative from fire, representative from police. Do we need a planning board too, or just? So, if you can, please submit a letter of interest to the select board office at Town Hall. All right, we have a Housing Authority vacancy, just one.
One.
On that same note, we have a Housing Authority vacancy for the Housing Committee. And if you have any interest, submit your application to the select board office. Moving on to item seven, I'm going to skip over job descriptions for town minister and fire chief and try and accomplish the other, rather routine work and come back to those if you don't have an objection.
That's fine.
That's fine. So I'm going to go to Newton Roofing Invoice.
Newton, tootin', Newton.
Newton, tootin', Newton.
I noticed that's a drastic reduction in what we originally were billed. Am I right, Reggie?
Actually, no, that is the same amount.
Six thousand one hundred and six.
I thought when we were dealing originally, it was like seventeen.
No, I don't know. I remember six thousand.
Okay.
So these are the guys that shovel off the wrong side of the roof?
Yes.
And then they use the hatchet on various parts of the roof and broke a few things with the hatchet and.
There was snow onto the sidewalk, left it there, yes.
Yes, and we're going to pay them six thousand one hundred and sixty dollars.
I'm not paying them. I'm against it if they want.
I would, I watched them. I watched them well on the roof. I was amazed.
You even helped them.
Huh? I mean, they had hatchets out there.
Yeah.
Here's a letter.
So I'm agreeing with that. I'm not interested in paying this. Let's see, whether this, the State Rockland Trust has not received payment for outstanding invoices, person with the. Well, here's a question. You know we're going to get sued.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, if we don't pay it?
Yeah. Okay.
Is this a relative of you, yours?
I noticed it's kind of a, it's the rich side of the family because they spell it differently.
What's a BBO anyways?
Bar, voter bar or Sears. He has to put his license number down. Where is it? Where do you see it?
Last page, thirty-five. It's on number three.
Oh, it says, and I'm just asking because it's kind of what I do. Instead of turning them down flat, was there some value to what they did and you want to make them an offer before we say no? Or was there no value to what they did?
There was some value to what they did. The first day, no, absolutely not. They'd shovel the wrong side of the roof. All right, and they were told what side to shovel. Second day, they shoveled everything into the sidewalk and by the time the highway department notified it, it was solid ice. We had to hire a special piece of equipment to chop it out of there. Okay, so everything that we, they did that was correct to get the snow off the roof because we had a lot of snow that January and we were leaking in here, if you remember.
Yep.
They did eliminate the leaking or stopped it because it was backing up beyond the rubber matting.
Have we ever told them why we aren't paying them? Have we ever sent them a phone?
We don't have an agreement.
Oh, this is that one we don't.
Yeah, we don't have an agreement.
Yeah, but have we ever written back and said, look, we aren't paying you because you just wanted to shovel it?
I don't know what was done when Diane was here. There was kind of a going back and forth and I know it was brought to the building reuse committee and they refused to pay it too.
So we didn't have an agreement for them to actually do it.
But we did talk about this settlement.
But if we hadn't told the company that what our satisfaction was, we should, we need to.
We talked about, would they accept half? We did talk about that and I think we sent a note to that effect, but I don't know. This is prior before I got on the board of selection.
Well, why don't we, why don't we send them a saying, you know, how much did that piece of equipment cost us to rent?
Well, it was about eight hundred dollars plus, you know, we supplied the manpower, so, you know, it was about a thousand.
So eighteen hundred dollars.
Right. And then they did, half the work they did was on the wrong side, so cut that in half. So they owe us like two grand.
Well.
Well, that may happen. When they sue us, we'll sue them back, but.
My recommendation is send them a note that will pay a dollar amount that we're agreeable to.
Well, I'm thinking you send them like a note saying, you know, you shoveled the wrong side, you shoveled it down on the side, it cost eighteen hundred dollars to get the ice off the sidewalk, therefore, we're going to offer you.
Half.
Three grand or two grand or whatever the number is.
I have no problem with that.
Pick a number.
Well, if they did half the job, so that's three grand.
Well, they, they backed it up. They took the easy, that first day was the easy part. There was, there was a small, smaller roof compared to the other side. Because we're talking two roofs on that side.
Plus you didn't, I mean, and they can come back to us because we own the building, even though we didn't contract with them, we own the building.
Correct.
So you wanted to have, not twelve hundred.
I'm just looking for a number. Give us a number and we'll send a letter. Whatever, whatever they feel comfortable. I mean, it's, it's six, Reggie?
Sixty something.
So six. So what do you figure the first day's work was worth?
Fifteen hundred dollars.
So six becomes forty-five hundred, minus eighteen hundred, hundred dollars gives us a number of what?
Twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred.
So before we go on, do we have any letters back and forth, paper trail at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
Nothing in the.
I, there was discussion back and forth, but the discussion was.
Just internal?
With Diane Schindler and the contract, the roofing company.
Well, why don't we send that, that'll be the basis of our letter. One, you did the wrong side.
Right.
Two, we had to, when you did it, we had to hire a piece of equipment.
Clean up the sidewalk to turn.
Here's an offer of twenty-three hundred dollars. Let us know.
Yep.
Reggie, formally like that letter, no?
Reggie, want to get some Mass General Law that says under Mass General Law, section blah, 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 there was no written contract and we are duly not needed to pay you anything, but consider you did come out.
There's a thing called quantum merit.
What's that?
The thing, the thing has value, but you're not going to get away because you weren't part of the contract. Is there, if that satisfies you, the board, somebody want to make a motion and we send that letter?
I make a motion to send the letter to Newton Roofing or their collection agency.
Rockland Trust.
Well, it's.
Is it bankruptcy court?
No, it's Bartlett Hacken Feinberg, P.C. Is evidently their representative. Their lawyer.
Who's Rockland Trust?
That Rockland Trust maybe, and I'm only guessing, maybe someone who they've sold that account, they come to.
The company too?
No, they sold our, our collection amount to.
Oh.
Send a letter with the amount of.
Yeah, the offer.
Yep.
What was our offer?
Three hundred dollars?
Yep.
All right, so that's done. Yes?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a letter from Steve Hyver regarding his vacation. Is that in here?
I did not put the letter in there. All he did was write nine weeks.
Oh, that's that thing I saw. He just wrote nine weeks.
Yeah.
Based on what?
We, we sent him a letter asking what he thought we owed him.
So that was, no, he gave you a simple answer.
He gave you a simple answer.
Because.
Why don't we send back to him and ask him to explain the nine weeks? Wouldn't that be the next step?
Well, I'd like to know what the nine weeks are.
Well, let's send, let's send.
Took vacation.
Right, let's, let's put a letter back to him saying, we've received your communication requesting nine weeks vacation. Please, would you itemize out your ration, your reasons for that number? Is that okay?
Yep.
Is the labor board any place to moderate anything like this?
It's based on our policy procedures book.
Yeah.
He'll have time earned, all right, but it's a prorated thing by number of years of service as a full-time person to the town. You know what I'm saying? Like somebody having thirty years as a department head would have five weeks of vacation.
What's the maximum you could have?
Five weeks.
Unless you get to nine.
Well, I don't know. We need to find out why.
So do you get to carry your vacation until the next year?
In the policy procedures book, you, with department head approval, which will be this board's approval to carry one week forward from a prior year can be done.
So maximum six.
But our bylaw allows that after July 1st, you're entitled to another year of vacation, not another year, another series of weeks of vacation predicated on the years of service. So in other words, one year complete, one week, two years complete, two weeks, five years, three, twelve, four, twenty, five. That's all.
And how many years has he put in?
I don't know exactly. I don't know.
Is that full-time or part-time positions?
It would be based on full-time status.
But he wasn't full-time except.
I don't know. It'll have to be figured out.
When he was made full-time since 2006?
When, when you approved his contract, you made it effective 2006 to count back the time years of service and not the, the number of years as part-time fire chief?
So five years, six years? Well, it started in 2006, right? He didn't make it to July, did he?
Yeah, he finished out his contract. We, or we let him finish.
He left in June, right?
Yeah, but we, but we.
We paid him to the end.
But we paid out to the end. He got his full contract in. All right.
Send us a letter with a rationale.
So basically, even the most you could ever ask for is six and if you took any vacation time in the meantime.
I can say he never asked me for, carry a week forward. You'd have to ask Jesse.
I know, on two occasions, where he worked, I had, had to give Billy Cleed a time off to go over there and run the department while he was on vacation, so.
I believe he did. I believe he did come in front of the select board. I think they made it part of his contract out of one year. I don't know which year to carry forward a week, but I don't know when.
All right.
Nothing to do.
Well, he needs to explain how he accumulated it, that's.
Right, that's what we're asking. We're going to send them back a letter, right?
Yes.
Thanks, Reggie.
Town Hall Security quotes. Back to security. Are we having any more problems? Does anybody know?
Yeah, I am.
You are?
I'll talk to you later.
Otherwise, no.
No, no more doors left open, no more?
No.
Nothing's been reported.
Speaking of doors, they fixed the council and aging door today. They're working on this door here. Put in the electric door opener on.
Good. That's an accident waiting to happen.
Hey, can I just toss something out there? Can we make more handicap spaces up on the top?
And what are we going to do?
No, just that some people notice.
This is based on, this is based on a number of parking places. You have X amount of handicap spaces. For every handicap space, you're taking away two, just to let you know.
So during the election, they noticed elderly people parking at the lower lot, having to walk all the way up and around and then come across that way and they couldn't make the stairs. So it makes sense that there is a need.
There's a need, but what I'm saying is for the building, we have the proper number of lots right now by the council and aging. That's where ninety percent of the council and aging handicap goes. If you want to put some more parking lot spaces down here, I'm not opposed to it, but you remember for every one handicap, you're taking away two spots, okay? You're taking away two spots.
All right, can we at least get one more handicap?
Well, it's the board's decision, but it's going to cost a lot of money to do that versus just painting a virgin parking lot because now you're going to have to X out the lines and take two spots. And it's going to take time and money, okay? Not a lot of money, but it's going to take time and money and you are reducing your parking place.
Why don't we send a letter to the council and aging? Ask them if they feel that they have enough handicap spots to deal with seniors coming in.
Fine.
Is that okay, Michael?
You know, I'm sympathetic to the need for more handicap spaces, but I'm also sympathetic to the fact that how often do we need them?
We just had to eliminate one spot because the post office would not deliver mail unless they had their own spot. And we had to eliminate one parking spot because the postal guy had to back up and he gave Reggie a hard time about it. And in order to do that, we had to eliminate a spot. Now we have handicap parking down by the fire station, which is also part of this complex too. There's another one down there.
You wouldn't be willing to leave well enough alone for.
No, no, sorry. Someone approached me, said this, and I'm just saying that. And it seems to me, as a physician, I can just imagine how hard it is to walk all the way around with really bad knees or, God forbid, you're up here with a walker trying to get up the driveway and slip on the ass.
I'm just. You know, I'll be honest with you, what I think a policy should be done is town employees shouldn't be allowed to park in the lower parking lot. They should be told to park in the upper parking lot. It would free up all those spots down there so people could come into the building.
But if you can't manage the stairs, you can't do that stairs.
Well, if you can't manage the stairs, what good is the handicap parking lot down below?
Over here, I'm saying over here.
I thought you meant down below.
No, I meant over here. Yeah, over here.
Couldn't we tailor that until the white lines wear off and we repaint them?
Yeah.
All I'm doing is conveying.
I'll be honest with you, Dave, in the course of the day, I see ninety percent of the time I'm here, those lots are, those spots are open.
The handicap?
Yes, and you can check with some other people too. The van parks there a lot and takes up a spot.
Can we just ask the council and aging?
I got a compromise for it. It was only during the election that we had the problem, right?
I don't know.
Well, I mean, I got, it's got to be because we don't have that. What if the next time we have an election, we'll ask the police department to rope off a couple more handicap spots during the election?
You know, Mike, this is one time that I am going to agree with, da-da-da-da, da-dah.
And I am too. I think it's.
Good, you better go back and evaluate yourself then.
Yes, Reggie, what did you want?
There's a divide opening up here between the tables.
I think that, it's a good idea. We've had complaints about handicap. We probably need another one. And is there, would it be a big problem having the?
Well, I have a, I have a solution.
Up, up, move up like you said?
I have a solution.
Okay.
I have elderly parking stalls.
I was going to say.
You are, I'm sorry, I took your mind. I have the elderly parking spots, which will not require handicap facility. So we'll just take the signs and put them over here and we'll make two elderly spots. Means that.
He's a older adult.
What if they're handicapped but they're not elderly? That's ageism, isn't it?
Don't we have a lawsuit we got there?
The elderly.
I'm, I'm just going to put two extra spots up there, see how it works out and designate them elderly.
I'm going to get one of them because I'm now elderly if this keeps going.
And we're not even putting down an age, it can be self-determined.
Yeah. Excuse me, ma'am, did you have something you wanted to bring to us? I saw you sitting there. I've been meaning to come back to you.
I don't.
Okay.
Do you remember meeting Mrs. Esperanza?
Oh, no!
And Mr. Robert, who was our videographer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't want you sitting there wasting your time listening to us fight over parking spaces that we can't use.
So I make a motion to put two elderly parking space signs up on the top block.
I'll do that this week for you, Dave.
Do you have to say elderly? Could you say older adults?
Well, that'd be even better.
That is the correct terminology now. I am in dermatology in many ways and it's now older.
I have this one in the room. You can just call it old.
You know, you're just like.
You know, you're just like this... He's been saying we're old since we were forty, so, you know...
Well, how old are you, Ann? Oh, on live TV?
So there's a motion there?
Older adults.
There's a motion there with this. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Oh, gosh. There is a divide opening between the tables. All in favor?
Abstain, unless you put older adults...
You're gonna abstain after you push that whole thing through?
Man, I gotta pepper my twir. We'll leave the signs we have there until they fade, and then we'll make new ones up. They'll say older adults, which is a common practice because...
I'm gonna fade on this committee.
So you'll put those signs up tomorrow, right? No, not tomorrow. I said this week.
Did I think we were gonna get off on that for parking spaces?
I think we should get going.
Old Town Hall feasibility study funds. Oh, what was that, Reggie? You told me, and I forgot.
There's forty-five hundred dollars left from the funds that we used for the feasibility, so Virginia has asked if the board would vote to transfer those funds back to the CPC.
Yes, we should do that. There a second?
Second.
Okay, this is a motion to transfer money that CPC gave us or gave the town to do feasibility studies, and we didn't spend it all, and we have forty-five hundred dollars left. We're putting it back into CPC. Just be clear what the motion is. There's a motion, and there's a second. All in favor? I skipped over security quotes, didn't I?
Yes.
Okay, go back to security quotes. Reggie, explain this one.
Is it just one?
The quotes consist of, if I'm not mistaken, there's a camera quote. The camera would be installed in the corner of this entrance here and at the corner of the senior center, which would be live feed to the police department. The next one is the keypad for the main entrance over here. Keypad meaning number code versus having keys to the door.
So an electronic lock type of deal?
Was something you wave in front of it?
He said we couldn't use key cards, but I believe this one's the number.
It says twenty-five HID key tags.
Okay, so this one's the card. We have the other option of the key, the number codes, going into in and out of the town hall, locking it.
Now, what does this do? What do we gain by doing all this?
Don't lose keys.
You can lose cards.
But it's easier to control. Once the card is locked...
How is it easy you can control?
Once the card is locked, you can block that out. Versus replacing all the cylinders.
Or you can just reprogram the numbers in.
Exactly, yeah.
There's an infinite number of combinations of numbers that you can use to read key without having to change the key pattern.
Exactly, and if someone forgets to lock a door, you can put the timer on it to have it lock the town hall at a certain time.
Automatically. Oh, that's a nice idea.
I don't see a keypad. All I see is the cards.
Go above the page, go to page...
Above that?
Above that.
Door cameras, door camera.
Oh, that's just the camera.
Honeywell Door Masterwood Network.
That's it. Access control for the agents, yeah.
On the camera, getting back to the camera, is this a seven-day tape that's gonna be used over and over again, or is it a tape that after so many days, it's stored and kept?
I'm not sure.
Well, I think the...
It says DVR.
It's a DVD, yeah, DVR.
So it's recorded, but I don't know the length of the recording.
If it's seven days and records itself over the same tape, I mean, I just wanna know.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Whatever the board would like, we can ask.
But you said with a live feed to the police department.
Yeah, but ten times a live feed, if they're busy, then I can see it.
We have some technical assistance here.
On DVR, most times, you could hook up to the back of it with an external hard drive after it's full and empty it out onto that external hard drive via HDMI or, you know, HDMI, but a firewire cable or something like that. So theoretically, if it's one of those models, you can just keep moving it and archiving it as you go along, but I don't know.
Everything is sort of like on computer databases now, so you won't have the evolving expenses of DVDs or tapes.
Well, I just don't wanna have a tape that's live with no backup, because if somebody breaks into the building, what good is it? Okay, and the same thing is, I'd like to have it for at least a minimum of seven days, but I am in favor of the cameras.
Alright, well, let's, okay, so we have two estimates, right? Two, we have just the cameras, and is the second estimate cameras and that, or is that a separate?
Separate.
So if you wanna do both, it's twenty-five hundred?
Seven thousand.
And forty-two hundred?
But this is... I have no problem with doing one at a time, but when you start doing both of them, we only have one bid, and we have to get other bids.
Did we solicit other bids, Reggie?
No, not yet. It's under five thousand.
Not together. That's what I'm concerned about. That's coercive in the law. They talk about manipulating. You can't do that. It's a package. It's going out.
From reading this right, the twenty-four sixty-nine does not include the indoor and outdoor camera. There are seven hundred, nine hundred extra.
Alright, so here's the question. First question is, do we wanna improve security in the building?
First question, is there a need to improve security?
That's a better question. Is there a need to improve security in the building?
I wouldn't know that.
Well, I'm just wondering, do, how is the current investment that was done on securing the rooms individually going? Are they all using it?
I do not think so.
Well, then, we should do one separate.
There are two offices that are not.
Are they all, are they all having any problems?
No.
If everybody stopped doing what we're supposed to be doing, we're gonna put another level on because people are not doing it.
So start having people do what they're supposed to do first.
So what generated this? How'd you get to this point?
This?
Well, we've kind of always been moving in this direction because of the key problem.
Well, the key, this security was started way before we had a key problem, right? It's something the board loaded on before I got here, I believe. But you went in, and all the rooms, the offices, have a security system.
Yes.
Alright, the only thing that's open now are the hallways and the common areas, like this room, maybe the meeting room upstairs. They can't get into the storage areas upstairs, and if everybody's doing what they're supposed to, they can't get into anything but the bathrooms downstairs. So all we're talking about now is security for the common areas, the two meeting rooms, and the bathrooms.
And the parking lot.
This is a discussion, because you...
Okay, is the camera gonna be outside?
It's not gonna cover a whole parking lot. It's gonna cover the entrances to this bullet.
Oh, I thought we had discussed having a camera out there.
Well, there is outside, but it's closing back into the bullet.
So, you know, just looking at crime statistics in town, how much violent crime have been seen in town?
This isn't gonna stop by the front.
No, but I mean, what are we, what are we spending the money for?
Spending the money because we had a problem for the first year keeping the building locked.
How's it been?
And then the Gazette ran...
How's it been since?
So far, no reports.
So the Gazette ran an article, and the police chief, I remember that part of it. Is this our overreaction to an article in the Gazette? No, we've had some ongoing minor...
My mind, no.
We had, the door got broken, just...
But that was, that was while the building was open.
Right.
That was fixed. This one here, talking with Reggie, and I would say nine out of ten problems with their doors. People don't realize there's a panic bar that might be in the lock. And that's, that's been resolved for the most part, so we don't have that many problems anymore. And the people that have difficulty haven't been coming back to us, have they?
So you wanna let it just rest where it is for now?
It's fine with me.
Keep it on the burner?
I do, I do think the idea of a camera in the parking lot and on the doorways could be beneficial in the future. That's all. I mean, I'm not saying we have to do it now, but I think it should be on our wish list.
Well, then, the next question is, because do we budget for it next year? So we have a budget, a line item, and do we plan to go get some other bids and go ahead with the cameras? I think that's a reasonable compromise on the security issue.
I agree.
Because even if the building gets left open, we at least have some observation about the building.
Well, there's another, we talked about this, too, and Dave, you talked about it. A lot of times, this building is being closed at night by ladies and women, and a lot of times, they're out here by themselves, so I always thought the camera was a positive thing on the parking lot, just for security's sake. We have a bathroom in the building that is, unless the fire department's working, nobody sees it. So that's one option. But I do, I think it should be done in the future. Yes, I do. Do I think we should plan for it? Yes.
Is it the future now, I guess, is the question?
I think if we can budget it for next budget cycle, it would be a good idea.
Alright, so then, do we wanna take a vote? Do we wanna vote some number into next year's budget under our category to finance a camera system for security purposes for the building?
I would, the only thing I would say before picking a number is that I would get at least two other bids.
So we're just gonna put a placeholder, and what was, what was this bid?
It's about eight grand.
No, no, we're not doing the, the vote here is not to do the whole thing.
But you're looking for a number.
Yeah, but we're not gonna, we're looking for a number for the cameras, which is...
But the cameras go with the system. We need the whole system.
Yeah, you do need the whole system. Cameras are separate.
But isn't that the whole camera system of the twenty-five hundred?
No, that's one door camera, and then outdoor and indoor, below there are options, ones for six hundred, ones for seven hundred.
Correct. No, but there's one camera, there's one...
There's two quantity, what?
There's three cameras total, if I'm reading that correctly.
Yeah, but the options are not listed. If you understand this, Red, I apologize.
No, there's, for twenty-four hundred or twenty-five hundred dollars, you're getting...
There's four cameras here.
Four?
There's two Spectra-High residue colored cameras. And one of them...
Oh, it's an op site.
There's a top one is a camera.
Well, the one's an indoor dome camera, and the other one's an outdoor spectral camera, so...
And we're only looking for a number, so I'm saying, let's budget two thousand dollars.
That's not gonna be enough, but okay.
I know that's not enough. I don't wanna give anybody how much I'm willing to pay.
Alright.
If I, if you put twenty-five hundred dollars on the line item, guess what the estimate's gonna come out?
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, Michael. I know, been there, done that.
Michael, you'll just fool us next year. You won't fool myself. You'll look and say, "What kind of camera were you thinking about for twenty-four hundred dollars?"
Alright, so how much, how much do we wanna put in that line item?
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Alright.
I'll second that.
All in favor? There we go. Parking spaces and cameras, wow.
Now, do we wanna ask for more bids?
Well, we will have.
That's just a budgetary number.
It's just a budget number.
Yes.
Oh, we only got one bid, and I was saying, we need two other bids.
And that's still gotta get through the finance process next year.
Yeah, and what about the state? Does the state offer any money for surveillance?
Did you, did you see what the state did tonight? They're cutting across the board everything, and there's a major article with our local aid gonna be attached, too.
So the last quarter, third quarter?
I didn't get enough revenue.
He's gonna cut quite a bit. Alright. I'm sure we'll hear about it in the news and memos shortly.
What's this bylaw about poultry and manure? Have we missed that?
What?
There's a bylaw about poultry and manure.
Is that even ours?
Do we have to address that?
It's in the hands of the agricultural committee.
Let them bring it to us.
Alright. If, if nobody has anything else, I would go back to the minutes and then do what we came here to do tonight. The town administrator, fire chief.
I couldn't download the minutes. I think the file's too big.
So then, do we wanna table the minutes for another time?
Actually, can I, can I see your iPod, Dave? So I can try. Whoever's having problems with it.
No, I'm having trouble.
Well, I mean, we got a lot of minutes here tonight. I think we should look at them and be, and we're ready the next meeting to vote on them.
Alright.
Because it's a lot.
Right.
It worked this time.
Dave, how did you get there?
I went to the drop box.
The drop box?
Drop box, and then pending minutes.
I gotta get back, I can't get back into the...
I didn't know that's where... I didn't know where that was. Okay.
Yeah, there's a lot here.
Okay, good.
But on here, those also would be the job descriptions, right?
It's under personnel.
Reggie, on some of these minutes that we're gonna look at, how many are before I was elected, and could you give me an update if I can vote on those?
Yes, you can.
You gonna do them?
Yeah, let's do them.
Alright. Wait, 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 what are you doing?
I wanna do minutes next week. I wanna look at these and read these and get a comprehensive idea. These are old.
One is one page.
Fine.
Some of this is like Jess Dodd's, Michael Fallon, and...
Right, that's why I wanna get back and look at it.
The remainder are recent, from last week.
Alright, that's fine. We'll table the next one.
Alright, so we're gonna, alright, so now, if I'm correct, everybody, and let's make sure I am, we're gonna go on to the town administrator and fire chief contracts or job descriptions.
Where are they located?
Under personnel on your main...
What does the script...
Fire chief. May I make a suggestion that we do fire chief first, since it's the top one? Isn't it?
Sure.
And I just feel so proud of myself that I found it.
This highway one you got there is way old. That goes back to Jess Dodd. Come on.
Wait a minute.
Probably never been redone.
Reggie, it has been done.
Reggie, what is this one, the first one, knowledge of duties of fire chief? That's, that's really old.
Yes.
She gave us, you gave us all the ones that were...
Everything.
These are, these are not necessarily the last ones that were in place. These are all the ones that we've used over the years.
Well, you and I put together one.
Why don't we take the latest one?
Well, you can go to the bottom and do that.
We did, we put one together when we did with MRI, so I think that's the more, more important.
Two thousand and nine, right. I'm looking at two thousand and nine.
Page four.
Right. This, that looks like the one we did with MRI.
Yeah, I would go with this one. Yeah.
So the easiest way to do this is, let's talk about point by point. Seven to ten years, five years supervisory experience. Anybody have a problem with that? Number two, daytime working chief ability reside within a five-mile radius of Southampton Fire Department within one year of appointment. Anybody have a problem with that?
No. Five miles of the department, what if, I mean, that, does that encompass the whole town?
It encompasses the whole.
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be town. I mean, are we, are we making a residency requirement now?
It's always been there.
I know, but I'm just saying, five miles from the fire station, then he could live up in Forma Road, in town.
What rationale is there that somebody has to live at a certain distance from...
To respond, to be able to respond in a timely manner.
Be able to keep track of these, by the way? Okay, so the first three are okay.
Five-mile radius of the fire department.
I actually, the second one is someone.
So you wanna change that, looking for town, town residency requirement?
How about resides within five miles of the town of Southampton?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. What do you think?
Well, I'm thinking the extreme. If you're taking, so take the extreme border of the town.
Huntington, he's up there in Huntington on Breakneck Road in the far corner. He's right on the border, but for him to get from Huntington to...
I mean, I'm looking at the first part. It says daytime working chief's ability.
Daytime.
You know?
Yeah, but we, I, I, I don't have a problem, but I, I feel better if he resided in town myself.
I would take out daytime working chief ability. I would just say town residence within my year of position.
Reside within the town of Southampton.
So you're taking out the five-mile radius.
Take that out, and daytime working chief ability. I don't know what the hell that means, but I would just make it, you know, a town resident with one year of a position.
Right, I think I would eliminate, yeah, what was it? What the heck did that?
I think it was because it was a call. It was a part-time-ish like picture.
No, but this was when the full...
Working chief ability.
Yeah, I don't want...
Chief ability?
We paid a lot of money for that, for someone to draft that for.
The pain, please, I was there.
Okay, so...
So we just wanna change it to expect town residency within one year.
Within one year of appointment. Is that what everybody agrees to?
That's fine.
That's fine.
Intermediate level minimum EMS certification, current and maintained. Reggie, does anybody, do we have a year on this? Is this the last one?
This was nine.
It sounds a lot more clumsy than I remember.
This was put together by somebody else.
Yeah, I'm alright.
This was attached. Fire chief oh nine, one year.
Yeah, there's dates on the bottom. Oh nine. The second page was done in two thousand and three.
No, we're looking...
This one is, this one is two thousand and nine. This is the correct one, Mike. It's just that it's clumsy because it has stuff we don't know about.
Okay.
Like, I don't know what NFPA standard fifteen hundred is, but, you know, this is blessed by the MRI that...
Why are we going through this if we don't even understand the jargon?
Because we need to. I'm taking some of this on faith because... I'm taking some of this on faith because this was based on what this agency that does is, did, you know-
Well, that doesn't mean he's-
Well, let's, let's see if we agree with them, and we have to, we can. Going on, must be knowledgeable in compliance at all times with MGL 48, section 42.
That's requirement.
And abide by the, all Commonwealth and federal regulations, that's, that's-
I agree with that.
Knowledge of inspection regulation requirements, inspection of schools, commercial buildings, oil burners and that sort of thing, any problems?
No.
As of this material coordinator, certification is required.
That's required, it says as required, as required, it's, yes.
As required.
They've always done.
Must comply with safety practices under national for, I'm thinking that's National Fire Protection Association standard 1,500.
Well, the most current, how about we just say the most current?
That's a good thing.
Because what if it's 1,600 now?
Right, it, it is very good, so Reggie's gonna make that change. Ability to rec, to direct and rescue firefighting and salvage operations.
I don't know what you mean by salvage operations.
Oh, yeah. What about ability to fight fires?
Well, I mean-
Well, it says firefighting right there.
Ability to direct rescue is a management-
I'm assuming the salvage operations would be aftermath of the-
Right.
Or a car in a pond.
Right. Alright, so we're okay.
Yeah.
Ability to investigate and evaluate fire incidents.
That's required.
Ability to exert physical effort for weights to meet, I don't know what that is.
Home rule? No.
Must pass physical and drug screening and query check, okay.
Lord, I hope nobody's talking.
Knowledge of all equipment and ability to ensure all equipment is functioning properly, man, we paid somebody to draft this?
Mm-hmm.
Hope it wasn't a lot.
It was a lot.
It was a lot.
We're gonna scare everyone who has fire chief potential out there.
Must be able to communicate effectively, effectively, better than I can, at public meetings, willingness and ability to act as a representative of the fire department clea- with a neat, clean appearance.
Pleasant.
Oh, no, 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 this is a ridic, you don't put this in a job description.
It was in there.
You don't say clean, neat appearance in a pleasant, positive, courteous manner?
You're not gonna-
What is this, 1920s?
You don't wanna know some of the things, you don't wanna know-
Check those fingernails.
You don't wanna know some of the complaints we had.
Pleasant, positive, and courteous manner, I mean, really, it sounds like a-
We're a service-
How would you change it?
I wouldn't put that in.
You wanna strike that whole line?
I think it's-
I think it's just assumes that you should have it, but sometimes it just spell it out how it's gonna be.
I've never seen that in a job description.
I would, you?
I've read many job descriptions.
Anne, Anne, where do you-
They don't wanna be pleasant, they don't have to, it's not a job requirement, Mike, you know yourself, sometimes, we, we both can get unpleasant.
You would be, I know about you, but I don't know about me.
Nobody's fired us yet.
Alright, what would you, Anne, what would you prefer to put in there?
Gosh, must be able to communicate effectively at public meetings, that's good. Willingness and ability to act as representative for Southampton Fire Department.
With a profession, with a prof-
No, no, yeah.
That was added in later on.
Willingness and ability to act as a representative-
After the fire department.
In a professional-
Manner.
Manner.
Alright.
Pleasantly.
None of us are pleasant.
Well, come on.
Well, in a professional manner, in a professional manner.
So, that's, everybody's in agreement?
Alright.
Alright, strong ability to relate well with others, or two others, using communication, interpersonal diplomacy-
This is so juvenile, excuse me.
And related skills.
Strong ability to relate well to others.
I'm embarrassed to say you and I were on that menu when we were on.
How else would you relate without using communication, I mean, is there another option?
Not communicating.
Wait, is that to be confused with interpersonal communication, are those two different?
Can I have a candidate, please?
Anne, come up with, come up with a phraseology.
Strong ability, strong ability, this isn't even proper grammar, strong ability.
It'd be $25,000 or something.
I hope not.
We did, we did.
Not for this.
Yes, we did.
Not for the whole, for the whole thing.
The whole thing.
Okay, yeah. It wasn't not just the document.
Ability to relate well.
And then we picked somebody who wasn't in there.
Can you explain to Batshelder that he wrote this?
I, yeah, somebody.
You know what?
Yes?
Strike it all right now, and we'll come back to, just, it's really for-
Possessing, possessing a communication skills, you know, you can say a lot of those words.
How about good written and oral communication skills?
There you go.
Alright.
That's it.
That's good.
It's okay, Anne?
Yeah, that's good.
Alright, so we're there, we're, now I've lost my place. Uh, demonstrate problem solving and organizational skills, including strong attention to detail, ability to work independently with minimal supervision and successfully prior towards one's work.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Must be able to evaluate and understand the operations and issues facing municipal government and fire emergency services.
Obviously, yep.
Must possess experience in preparing and managing and abiding by budgets.
Underlined, abiding, please.
Abiding by budgets, now that's-
Well, that's a kinda, abiding by budgets.
How do you abide by a budget?
Is that simply-
Don't weigh the ambulance front to buy stuff.
You can't write a job description for one person.
Adhering to budgets? No, that's not good either.
Must possess experience in preparing, managing, and-
Developing?
And-
Yeah, developing would be, developing and following budgets.
That's fine with that.
Got it, Reg, are we going too fast?
Nope.
Are you alright with that, developing and following budgets?
Preparing and managing budget.
There you go.
There you go, alright.
We got a winner.
We got a winner.
We got a grant writer.
Alright, we just changed that, you catch it, Reggie?
It's true, I do do something like that.
Must possess working knowledge of computers, ability to develop and maintain records using Microsoft programs.
Hmm, do we have to put Microsoft in?
I was just gonna say a little product enforcement.
Huh? Oh, there it is, okay.
First of all, he probably got Microsoft off there, but I don't think he's using it.
Must be able to use EMR, I mean, use electronic medical records, I think is.
Oh.
Familiar with using electronic medical records, which is like the mandate, that's fine.
That's fine.
Okay.
Well, he should have a possess, he should possess a working knowledge of computers and, what is it, emergency?
No, electronic medical-
Electronic medical records.
And be able to maintain those records as per whatever.
Say it's low enough for Reggie to get.
And be able to maintain those records at per state and federal regulations, alright, Regs.
Okay. Ability to delegate and manage the department effectively and efficiently.
Yeah.
Ambulance director, knowledge of Massachusetts and local regulations as pertaining to ambulance services.
Well, now, let's hang out for a second, let's-
Yeah, why does that come with?
The chief is not gonna be the ambulance director, we already talked about Conway talking about this.
Correct.
The chief is gonna be the chief, and is gonna be a fire deputy and, and E, uh, ambulance deputy, EMS.
But shouldn't the chief be able to be both?
Well, it says ambulance director, but he's supposed to delegate that, and that was one of the things that Conway wanted to see.
Well, I mean, we might be looking at two different term, I think this is saying he's gonna be in charge of the ambulance, but there needs to be a director under him to handle the medical injury, am I right?
No, no, it's a whole, the whole delegation.
No, I was there when Conway was talking about, but he puts together the budget for this, and he's gonna be responsible for the budget, not the ambulance director, we don't have two positions here, but he can delegate one of his officers to be the medical ambulance director, or whatever you wanna call it, which is a different.
How about the ability to oversight ambulance services in the town of Southampton with knowledge, working knowledge of Massachusetts local regulations pertaining to ambulance and services?
It takes ambulance director right out.
Say it slow again.
I can't even remember what you just said, it sounded good though.
Reggie, do you get that? You got it?
It's on tape.
Alright.
Okay.
Ability to work with the Southampton Board of Selectmen. Stop. Massachusetts Fire Marshal's Office, Police Department, Building Code Enforcement Officer, Finance Committee, and other departments as necessary.
Yeah. And to become a member of the-
I don't think we put that in there, that's an option.
Okay.
Must possess and maintain a valid Massachusetts, don't you need a CDL license?
No, fire departments are exempt.
Yeah, exempt.
They have to have a regular license.
That's why we can drive the rigs, Michael.
No, I said fire departments are exempt.
We're fire commissioners.
Oh, you're not. Okay, um, so then, we, we got department responsibilities. Responsible for fire and rescue calls, preparation of fire department ramp for assets and equipment, perform field inspection, review plans for compliance with COES regulations.
Oh, I wrote this paragraph.
That way it's so elegant.
This is probably, we probably took, this was probably an older one that we melded in, and then, this is what we came up, this last paragraph sounds something more likely to put some thought to.
For our form operational testing and compliance of safety systems examples, fire hydrants, fire alarms, fire pumps, generators, sprinklers. Knowledge of and, of and supervises maintenance activities within the fire department, shouldn't it say?
Has knowledge of and, no, okay, knowledge of and supervises-
Supervises the maintenance of-
Not exactly.
Maintenance act, activities of the fire department.
Perform fire prevention activities, must maintain the highest quality of fire protection ambulance and rescue service at a reasonable cost to the taxpayer?
I don't know why it's in there.
Why is that there?
I didn't, Batshelder think you put that one-
We can't put a reasonable, I mean, what is, what does this mean?
There's a lot of unforeseen things.
Responsible to the Board of Selectmen. Didn't we have that before?
Must maintain the highest quality of fire protection ambulance and rescue services, period?
At a reasonable cost?
I don't think so, in a job description?
Yeah, within budget?
Well, that would be better, but must maintain, this, must maintain the highest quality of fire protection ambulance and rescue service.
You know, does anybody have-
Period.
Do we have a, that bulletin, what's this magazine that we get?
Mass. Minister Bul-
Mass. Minister Bul, they frequently have advertisements for fire chiefs in there, do we have one around here?
We did this. Yeah, but what they have is you pay them by the word.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I don't want, I want to see what they say about the job.
If you go on MMA.org, you might be able to see some job descriptions now, um, whatever vacancies are available.
Somebody gonna be able to do that?
I will attempt.
'Cause I'd like to see what someone else's job description looks like as compared to this.
But it's, it's not gonna be exactly like ours, because unless you kind of volunteer and-
No, I know, but it's still gonna have the qualifications, what, what qualifications we may be missing by not considering someone else's.
But it looks like we must have considered someone else's because we have standards.
Yeah, but I, this is-
You did look at a budget?
Yeah, we looked at a budget, yes.
Mike, there's a vacancy, Norwood.
He was there.
Got it, Norwood, what did, just tell us what it says for qualifications.
Fire chief in Norwood.
What does it say for qualifications?
I'm opening it. Uh, qualifications, position of fire chief, purposes of plan, organizing, direct operations of fire department, its staff and equipment, and the protection of life and property, semicolon, and the prevention and extinguishing of fires, semicolon, and the safe handling of hazard materials pleasantly, period.
Let's see a bridge version.
Works under the, works under the directs, direction of the general manager, it would be us, the Board of Selectmen, that's it.
That's it.
That's it.
That's the-
So, if you go to their website, though, they'll have additional more-
See if you can get there. You in Norwood?
Most of these jobs, they talk about referring back to the town for a full description of the job. They won't give it to you, I don't think.
She's, she's gonna try and-
Unless she can.
See if you can get that.
This is where we almost got that guy.
'Cause I mean, this says, no, I mean, this job description, and I'm not, I don't have a problem with it, but doesn't have an educational component to it at all.
Well, I mean, it's, um, we talked about yours, I mean, there's training points by fire to one EMS.
But we don't even have that in here.
Well, you have-
EMS.
Yeah, EMS level, minimum, intermediate level minimum.
Well, you have that EMS is, is the big thing.
But we don't have, you know-
I don't think our current chief has that.
You presume you have to have a high school, at least a minimum of high school education?
Doesn't say it.
You presume you have to have a high school, at least a minimum of high school education?
Doesn't say it.
I'm having hard, would it be? It's hard to find. I put in fire, didn't kick anything out, jobs.
Mike, David said that you all, when you went, went through this and did it, you, you looked at a lot of different-
Fire did.
Positions.
We did, I mean, we spent days in-
Days.
Yeah, where you gave it up and gave it to somebody to put together for you?
No, 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 no.
Because I'll tell ya, this is, um-
Alright, so this is the fire chief-
Oh, yeah.
Job description, so, you ready for this?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, it's, it's four pages, I'll read as, as best I can. Position purpose, the purpose is to plan, organize, and direct the operations in Norwood Fire Department, its staff and equipment, and protection of life and property, and the prevention and extinguishment of fires, and the safe handling of hazardous materials, all other related work as required, so I think they have a division already, because it hasn't talked about the ambulance at all.
Well, they might have a separate ambulance.
Any other supervision?
But what are their qualifications, I wanna know what their qualifications are for the job.
Uh, job environment, essential functions, uh, minimum qualifications.
There you go.
And now, this is, this was, we offered the job, we wanted to offer the job to that guy who was like a deputy, and he was making a hundred twenty thousand a year in Norwood, yeah, okay, so, he wasn't the chief and he was making 120. So, the minimum qualifications is a bachelor's of fire science or related field, 10 years of progressively responsible experience in fire rescue, emergency management, emergency medical services and management, So, the minimum qualifications is a bachelor's of fire science or related field, 10 years of progressively responsible experience in fire rescue, emergency management, emergency medical services and management, or any equivalent combination of education and experience. By driver's license. And then, you want to know knowledge and ability, or?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah.
Uh, knowledge, thorough knowledge of current practice and principles of fire service management and emergency medical service response in municipal setting, I like that. Extensive knowledge of laws, rules, and regulations relating to fire protection, very general, doesn't hold us down till we miss something. Comprehensive technical knowledge of emergency medical response functions, ability, ability quickly and pleasantly and prudently exercise...
Prudently, not pleasantly.
Exercise command authority in life threatening situations.
He didn't know, she's reading over your shirt.
Oh, he's changing it.
He's changing it?
No.
Yeah, he's changing it. I know him. There's something he didn't like.
It's going slow.
Ability to do all that and take into account a wide variety of factors and concerns. I think that's the budgetary thing. Uh, demonstrate ability to formulate goals and objectives and establish and maintain effective contacts with a variety of groups and organizations on the outside, in and outside of government, I like that. Ability to remain calm, concentrated, perform all responsibilities in a competent manner at all times, nothing about being pleasant. Ability to communicate effectively and efficiently verbally in all writing, at all times, and in writing at all times. Ability to delegate responsibility and work well with subordinates. Ability to recognize town-wide priorities and work cooperatively to support their...
This is well-written.
Why wouldn't we steal that?
Let's just steal it. Skill, imagination, innovation, and judgment pertaining to planning and achieving department goals, I like that. Financial management skills.
Now, this is still under qualifications.
This was skills, yeah, this was, uh, we talked about...
The only thing, the only question we have to go back is the bachelor's degree.
Yeah, we don't have that.
I mean, you're not gonna, I don't know.
What's nice is they divvied it up with different sections, so it's very clear, rather than just having a listing like this.
What I can do is I can copy this and, and forward to you guys. It does talk about physical requirements.
What are the physical requirements?
Um, uh, below the B and employees, that's what, blah, 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 blah. Strictly required to walk, talk, stand, sit, use hands to finger, handle, feel, or operate objects, tools or controls, and reach with hands and arms, and as, even the paper files, and other common office orders.
Well, here's another thing.
How big is this department? How big is this department? He might be able to delegate everything.
A deputy was making 120. So, I mean, what I'm talking about, does he have three shifts? Does he have, like, three deputies, 10, you know, we don't know what the staff structure is. Well, let me continue, it's not...